This meeting come to order. Today is Tuesday, February 28th, 2017. This is a voting meeting for the Prescott City Council. Thank you for coming in everybody today. We've got a pretty full schedule here, so we'll get started right away. Mayor Pro Tem, do you have any introductions?
No, Mayor, I really don't.
Okay, thanks. Our invocation will be by Brother Steve Campbell from the Church of Latter Day Saints, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be by Councilwoman Wilcox.
Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we are grateful for thy many blessings to us, especially thankful to live in this beautiful community and in this great nation. We are grateful for those who serve us faithfully and pray that thou bless them today as they discuss the items on their agenda that they might be clear of mind and be able to make wise decisions and continue to bless our lives. We are grateful for thy goodness and pray for thy Spirit to guide us forward always in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with ever being and just as for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Olberg.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilman Shiskas is absent, excused. Councilwoman Wilcox?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
I just have a brief announcement from the Solid Waste Department. On March 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, we're going to be doing some testing in terms of access out at the transfer station, because in May, we're going to have to do some slab remediation and some work on the main scales. So, over the course of the next few days coming up, we're going to need to do some testing about the way to get people in and out of there in terms of access. And we just wanted the public to know, because it might prove to be a minor inconvenience.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to presentations.
Item A, presentation of the Flags of the Patriots Project by Sunup Rotary.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. With me this afternoon, we have a number of members from the Sunup Rotary that would like to share a little bit of valuable information for our current flag project that we're undertaking with the Sunup Rotary Club. So, gentlemen?
Thank you for coming in today.
Thank you. My name is Mark Anderson, and I'm with Prescott Sunup Rotary Club here in Prescott, and appreciate you giving us a chance. The name of our project is Flags for Patriots. And I don't get the sense that I need to sell patriotism in this town. I think we have a pretty solid base of patriots. What we're with this project, I think we're doing is we're trying to up our game a little bit in terms of the display of our patriotism. Our partner on this project is U.S. Vets, and we're looking to support them, and I think I'll just relate a little bit. My father-in-law's a World War II vet, and we did this project starting last Veterans Day, and I was just amazed on how well received it was, that he felt honored by having this flag delivered to his house and set up by us, and knowing that we're going to come back at least four times a year and set these flags up. So, this is a recurrent service of delivery of flags. And it's not a... This project has been tested in other places in the United States, and one of them is North Canton, Ohio. And that's kind of where we adopted this concept, and with me is my friend Bud Ackerman, and he can talk a little bit about that.
Sure. Thank you. We appreciate your time. I know you have a lot on your mind, but what I'd like you to do for just a second is think about our next national holiday, Memorial Day, on May 29th, and just visualize yourself driving around town through the neighborhoods, and you see a two-by-three American flag, just like this one, in front yards, all over the city. Wouldn't you be proud of that? Well, this idea came to our club from one of our members, as Mark mentioned, who came in from North Canton, Ohio, and his club was doing this. And basically, the way it works is essentially, we ask for an annual donation of $49. And what we do for that is we will install a flag in someone's front yard for six national holidays around the year. And we'll be starting with Memorial Day in May. We kind of went through a trial run for Veterans Day, just to see what the logistics would be and what we would have to plan in order to make this a success. And so, we kind of got that out of the way. And so, now, we're really looking for support from leaders like you, that are proud of your city, the citizens that are proud of our city, and we just want to get the word out. And if you have ideas, resources, your leadership, we would really appreciate that in getting the word out. We think it's a great project. In North Canton, Ohio, they started with a few flags. Every year it's grown, and they... After five years now, they have over 500 flags that they install on these holidays. Basically, we put it up the weekend before the holiday, take it down the week after holiday, and we store it. So, that's our project. We'd like your support. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them, and we have some flowers that we're passing out also. Thank you.
Councilwoman Orr, you got a question?
Yes. Well, I am a Sunup Rotarian and very proud of these men and what they've done, and I have one of these flags in my yard, and I took it down, put it up, and also bought one for my neighbor for Christmas, so I get to look at his and mine. I think it's a great project, and I would like to say all of the proceeds also go to SURF, which is a 501(c)(3), so it is a tax deduction, and the Sunup Rotarians do great things with the money that goes to SURF. So, thank you, gentlemen, and I hopefully will brainstorm some ways that possibly we can help you.
Yes. Thank you very much, and we appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Thank you, it's a very worthy project.
Thank you.
Next presentation?
Item B, presentation and invitation to the 2017 Fire Ops 101 event.
Sorry you have to look at my ugly mug twice today. With me this afternoon, I have Captain Brian Birch with the Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority, along with Captain Dan Baumann and Beth with Adventure Auto Glass, that'd like to offer a little bit of testimonial about last year's class and extend an invitation to yourselves as council members and the mayor to take part in this year's class on April 14th and 15th. So, gentlemen and lady, if you care to join me up front?
You get a groovy helmet.
No questions, who's who, right?
Hi, Councilman, Mayor. Dan Baumann with the Prescott Chapter of the Firefighters Association. This is going to be the third year we've done our Fire Ops or Fire Operations 101 course. It gives us an opportunity to showcase some of the things we do day in and day out in the fire service. Beth Staub here is a former participant. I know Councilwoman Wilcox came out last year and observed, and anyway, she's going to talk a little bit more about it. We've had a lot of participants in the past, but it's a program we're pretty proud of. It gives a good insight into some of the things that we do and deal with, and instead of me trying to explain it, I might turn it over to Captain Birch and Beth here, so...
Well, I have to apologize up front, and first, I'm still dealing with this respiratory bug, so you're catching me on the tail end of my antibiotics. Anyway, if you're not familiar with Fire Ops 101, it was developed through our union, the International Association of Firefighters, and basically what it is, is a partnership program with community, local, and state decision-makers, and obviously Beth as well, and we've invited other folks, with some of our law enforcement folks who are taking place or participation this year as well. Basically, it allows you folks to come out and participate in the program and actively be a fireman for the day. So, when the chiefs come to you and say, hey, we need this type of a fire truck or this piece of equipment, or staffing levels, or any of those other nature type of things, it gives you a different perspective and an insight of... And allowing you to make a valid decision for our communities to keep us all safe in that. So, we all have a vested interest in this program from your side of the table and ours as well. So, that's why we're here today. We'd like to invite you... We have a variety of invitations, some of you as participants. We've already slated you out, so you'll be called out as participants, and then others, we'd like to invite you along just to observe the program, and then maybe even participate next year, if you like. It can be physically challenging as well. We try to keep it within the reins that we can actually keep it safe for you. It is overseen by professional firefighters from local 3066. We have folks from Prescott, CAFMA, and there's just a variety of folks come out, and we partake in a fun program, and lunch is served as well. So, I'll throw that out there, it's always good food and good conversation. And I'll let Beth talk about it here in a little bit.
And I got to say, the food is great. That is absolutely true. And food, food entices me everywhere I go. I am a former teacher and a business owner, and when I was asked to do this, I was thrilled. I used to do a ropes rescue up on the Navajo Nation when I lived there, so I thought, ah, easy. Not so easy. Prescott Quad City areas has a whole lot of different problems than the nation, and that means buildings. And I've never been dressed in full gear going into a building when it's black and having to climb up and downstairs, and that is one of the things that hit me hardest. I hope to God I never have a fire in my home, and I am so much now more aware of fires and what we can do to help when there is a fire in someone's home. These men are amazing. I've always had respect for the fire department. I have a hard time believing anybody doesn't, but I didn't really understand the hugeness of what they do and how they do it. And this particular opportunity opened my eyes to a whole new world, which anything that changes my perception, being a former teacher, is huge. And this will last with me for a lifetime. I will do anything I can do to support our local fire. I know you guys are aware that they all work together now, and that is something that also blew me away, to see very competitive fire departments come together and figure out how to make us safer, work better, is huge. And I really give them kudos for all of the things and all the inspiration that they have given each other, and how they're working even with the police departments to get the same thing. This system that they have developed needs to be in schools, cities. Their systems are amazing, and if you don't know that, please take the opportunity to go and learn their systems, because as a business owner, systems make me profitable. They are so wise in their systems and how they work together. I'm blown away. I'd love to do it again, but maybe in five years, I'll come back and ask. Really take this opportunity to do it. Oh, that'd be very fun. The stuff is heavy, jaws of life. I got to play with the jaws of life. Crazy heavy, had no idea what it takes to physically do that, to try to save a life out of a car. If you've not experienced that, this is something that is amazing as well. I can't give Yabba Pike County enough love for what our firefighters do. Please take the opportunity. If you have any questions about my experience, I'm sure that you've heard from Gene too. It was amazing. Did it not just blow your doors off? It was amazing.
It was.
It was fabulous, and it really opened my eyes. And we were in empty buildings when we had to go in and try to rescue someone. Think about your home. I just watched the documentary Minimalist. On top of this, we are hoarders even when we're not hoarders. If somebody has to come in your house, and it's dark, and try to save you, your children, your pets, it's crazy. I think about it every day in my house. Anyway, I could talk to you for hours, I won't, but I'm telling you, this is a life-changing experience for the good. We have amazing, amazing firefighters. Granted, three of them, four of them are my past children from school, and I'm so proud of them. But a big shout-out to them, and like I said, if you need anything, add you get a cool helmet. I love my helmet.
Councilwoman Orr, you got something to say? I mean, Wilcox, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to encourage all of you to try to get to this event, even if you have only one or two hours that Saturday. It really helps you understand all that goes into how the fire department operates, why it takes six people to revive someone with a heart attack, why they send the big red truck out. I mean, all these questions that we get from people in the public about, why does it... Why do the fire department do that? We don't really know until you go to this Fire Ops event, and then you begin to understand and appreciate the job they do. By the way, it's April 15th, right?
Fourteenth and fifteenth.
Fourteenth and fifteenth.
So, as far as observers go, if you want to just come out and observe the actual scenarios, that would be on the 15th from eight o'clock in the morning till about three in the afternoon with lunch, and that typically the scenarios kick off at nine, we're done about one o'clock. We have lunch together. We present our helmets and so forth, and then we disperse after that.
If you want to be a participant and don the uniform and all that, you better start working out at the gym right now, because you've got to be buff. I chose to be an observer, but I learned a lot.
So, where does that occur?
The fourteenth and fifteenth.
No, but where? I didn't...
I'm sorry, sir. It's going to be at Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority. It's CARDA now, instead of SERDA, it's our training center out on Valley Road, at 9601 Valley Road, Prescott Valley.
All right. Any other questions, comments from the council?
Just one. I would encourage anybody that hasn't done it to do it. I did it in 2007, when we had our burn house out at the transfer station. And I think the most scary thing that I've ever done in my life is put my hands in a fireman's hands when we were doing the rappelling off the rocks in the granite hills, and you're going down backwards, and you're not supposed to be nervous about this stuff, right? So, anyway, if you haven't done it, it is indeed a day to do something very different, and you're right, when you put all that clothing on, you better be ready for it.
Anyone else? Well, thank you, appreciate it.
You're very welcome, sir.
Thank you. We have some invitations. Should we circulate them right now, or...
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, very good.
Jim, I've got one each for you. There's an observer and a participant for you.
Thank you.
Greg.
Thank you.
Go.
Thank you.
Mayor Olberg.
Thank you.
And teachers, if you choose to put on all the stuff, you can.
Okay, I better start working out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time, we appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, and I've been asked to pull item H for further discussion.
Consent agenda. Item A, approval of minutes for the city council meetings held on January 31st, February 7th, February 14th, February 15th, and February 21st, 2017. Item B, approval to add Western Refuge to the approved contract listing for OEM and aftermarket parts. Item C, approval of the consent to assignment for city contract number 2016-101, from energy savings heating and cooling to Prescott sheet metal. Item D, approval of resolution number 4375-1584, authorizing a commitment of funding from the Community Development Block grant, 2016 Annual Action Plan, in the amount of $55,000 toward the construction of sewer and water infrastructure for a low-to-moderate-income workforce housing project, Creekview Village Apartments. Item E, approval of revision of plat, RP 16-008, of both the Idlewood and Nap tracks. Item F, award of city contract number 2017-247, to Earth Resources Corporation for construction of the Haciapa Forest Main Realignment Construction Project, in the amount of $44,965, and approval of night work. Item G, approval of an economic development consultant contract for services with the Robb Group, in an amount not to exceed $44,100. And item H is the adoption of resolution number 4374-1583, approving an agreement with Goldar Associates Incorporated for the Big Chino sub-basin groundwater flow model in an amount of $1,149,300.
Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items A through G.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and second vote, please.
Passes six to one.
Item H, I think, Leslie, you had...
I'm sorry, six to zero.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me today. This item is something that you did see two weeks ago in your study session, but I'd like to reiterate that today's prospective contract for the development of a Big Chino sub-basin groundwater flow model is one of the very distinct milestones within this three-party agreement known as the Comprehensive Agreement Number One, which was approved by council in September of 2012. Water supplies and the management thereof are a long-haul effort, so today's contract also furthers the work that began by the city in 1977, when the Big Chino supplies were investigated by both the Arizona Water Commission and the Bureau of Reclamation, for which the estimates of the groundwater and storage were estimated on the order of 12 million acre-feet. Both Comprehensive Agreement Number One and Agreement in Principle were notable, or are, they're existing right now, are notable binding agreements that set forth the cooperation for reliable supplies to be accessed in the future by our region, while also protecting the river flows needed both for the immediate downstream communities, the flora and fauna, as well as the population relying on the Salt River Project water delivery system. At the February 14th, 2017 council study session, a brief overview was given on the type of model that would be used, the proposed contract to complete the modeling work. The work area, the... I should probably move through these. This is the work area, the data requirements, the three-party structure, including subconsultants representing each party, Goldar Associates, who the proposed or the prospective contract is with, the support teams through the Department of Water Resources, USGS, and others, were all presented, the model costs, as well as the schedule for this, a three-year project were discussed. These items are available today for questions that you may have. And briefly, I'd like to note in our audience today, all members arrived today, as well as the consultant for this prospective contract. So, I should start in-house first. The city's Public Works Department provides support with a capital improvements manager, so Ben Burns is in the office, or at the meeting today. We have the representatives from both the other parties. John Munderlow, representing Prescott Valley, if you don't mind, raise your hand higher. And Greg Cornrum, representing Salt River Project, also here. And I'd like to introduce Dave Carr. This is the consultant, the prospective consultant with Goldar Associates for this three-year project that we're entering into, which again is, this is a big milestone, and as I will reiterate again, these are long-haul efforts. And I have predecessors who worked long before me, and there's another one in the audience I can see as well, that was involved with this water supply. So, if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to do so.
Questions, comments from the council?
Just good to see SRP in the House. Thanks, Greg.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
I have a few questions. Leslie, who is on the steering committee?
Back up. So, this slide, the steering committee is made up of the city of Prescott representative, which is myself, the technical piece. We should piece in Ben Burns as well, because he's the capital improvement project manager. So, all large projects generally have a manager associated with them to work through the contracting aspects and work directly with the consultant. Steering Committee also includes John Munderlow, representing Prescott Valley, and Salt River Project, represented by Greg Cornrum. Now, this all does feed up to our principals. The principal for the city of Prescott is Craig McConnell. Town of Prescott Valley is Larry Tarkowski, and Salt River Project is Dave Roberts, I believe.
Are the meetings open to the public?
These are not meetings that require open meeting law or associated with open meeting law rules.
Are the minutes available for public review?
We make notes at each one of our meetings, and so those could be requested through a public records request.
Okay.
I think you're asking about transparency?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. So, I think it's important, if I can just move to the city's website real quick, if you don't mind. Except for I'll get MSN. Okay. So, under City Services, Water and Sewer, the Big Chino Water Ranch Project, this is where I keep all the items, you know, the big pieces relating to the ranch, the Agreement in Principle, and how that was approved by council, as well as the Comprehensive Agreement elements there, and then all past announcements. Probably the most valuable to the public might be the annual report, so the group prepares an annual report each year, and we post that. All the monitoring contracts, you can see that the city's entered into quite a few, and then this is a placeholder for the modeling.
Okay, so, the meeting, the meeting minutes themselves, one would have to make a public records request, and pay 25 cents a page?
I believe so. I'd have to ask our city attorney how that would... Were there meeting notes of a...
Our goal is to eventually go electronic with a public records request, so that they can... That online requests could be made, and electronic documents can be sent, in order to avoid the actual copying cost and the charge for CD-ROMs, but if you want paper, it is 25 cents a page.
Okay. The reason I asked this to be pulled from the agenda is, this is a really complicated issue with a long history that goes back for most of us on the council.
Yes, ma'am.
Before my time, Greg's time, and certainly the mayor's, Billy yours, and Steve Shiskas. And you've given us a lot of material to read, which I hope we all read. It took hours. And it's very difficult to understand, for me, why the USGS model wasn't adequate. Perhaps you could address that question?
The USGS model, also known as the Northern Arizona Regional Groundwater Flow Model, and we coined it into the NAGARFAM, that was the kind of a first-generation model that was done, and it covered a very... I mean, it covered most of it in northern Arizona. While that was being developed, I actually worked for the Arizona Department of Water Resources and was partially responsible for that contract at that time. Even at that time, because there was interest by the city to pump supplies in the Big Chino, all scientists recognized that a more focused model was required to actually get at the requirements of it. The grid size on the Northern Arizona Regional Groundwater Flow Model are large, and it was also, at least I have coined that, it's first generation. So, it was USGS, ADWR, the city at the time, and I didn't work for the city at that time, likely SRP, I'm sure it was Prescott Valley as well, all knew that a refined model focused in on the Big Chino was going to be necessary. So, that doesn't mean that the Northern Arizona Regional Groundwater Flow Model is not being considered by the consultant. They're bringing all the pieces together to develop a tighter, refined model for this area.
And what are the scenarios that will be run through the model, or is that part of this project?
Well, let me back up real quick. I guess I need a different pointer. Okay. So, in here, groundwater pumping and precipitation variability, those are really, I've described them in the past, as the two exercises that are going to be run on the model to make sure that everything's working properly. In terms of scenarios, we had this discussion heavily with the NAGARFAM model, as to what kind of scenarios should be run, and those really won't be happening until a later contract, because what we're building right now is a very robust model. It's going to be tested with groundwater pumping. You could call them scenarios. They're exercises, we're going to exercise the model. And precipitation variability are the two that are going to be part of this contract. The Comprehensive Agreement speaks to updating this model every three years, and that's when we'll start being able to look at scenarios in a tighter fashion, and I think that's what you're asking about. You know, when do we start saying, okay, well, this part of the aquifer is behaving this way, and that part of the aquifer is behaving that way, and it's because whatever the condition might be out there.
Okay. And the ultimate objective is for us to understand whether or not, if, when we... If and when we pump at maximum capacity out of the Big Chino, there's going to be a negative impact on the Verde River. Correct?
Right. It speaks to mitigation if necessary, and so that's listed within the Comprehensive Agreement. So, you know, once again, discussions, even with the NAGARFAM model, it was looking at timing and magnitude. What is the timing and magnitude of pumping within the Big Chino on the Verde River? So, there will be those discussions, and mitigation is part of the discussions if necessary. It's also, I think, important, as you said, there's so much history that goes with this. You said the council already approved a resolution, I believe it was definitely before my time, that the historically irrigated lands up there could be put aside for mitigation. So, the city's already made some very clear signals on how they would, you know, are working cooperatively with other users on that watershed system. So, not only our immediate downstream, Clarkdale, Cottonwood, Camp Verde folks, the needs of the river, the flora and fauna, but also at the end of the line, so to speak, you know, the populations that are... You said the council already approved a resolution, I believe it was definitely before my time, that the historically irrigated lands up there could be put aside for mitigation. So the city's already made some very clear signals on how they would, you know, are working cooperatively with other users on that watershed system. So not only our immediate downstream, Clarkdale, Cottonwood, Camp Verde folks, the needs of the river, the flora and fauna, but also at the end of the line, so to speak, you know, the populations that are relying on the supplies that Salt River Project maintains.
One of the comments that I received was questioning the cost of this contract, which does seem large, although I understand that Prescott's share is about one-third of that.
Yes.
I just wish that we could pay our employees that hourly rate that this consultant lists for his employees.
Well, with a lot of these highly scientific, I mean, this is a rigor that the city generally wouldn't seek to have a person on full-time to do. This is highly scientific work that's being done with a groundwater flow model. We, well, that's my impression, and it would be actually the city manager's decision if we had that level of expertise, you know, here all the time.
Well, I was looking at the administrative support salaries, $80 an hour is pretty nice. I wish we could pay that in press.
Mechanics pay that much.
True.
Engineers.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
That's okay. You didn't need to respond to that one.
I was gonna...
It was just a comment.
I got one question, Mayor Fumey.
Let me just go ahead of you for a second. Now, as I understand this study, it will not be able to really tell us the impact of the exempt wells in the Paulding area, and how they might affect the Verde, is that correct?
Well, you know, if you don't mind, let me ask the consultant, the prospective consultant, if you would mind coming up and speaking to that. That was a question that we had from Councilwoman Wilcox at the last meeting, and Mr. Carr, if you don't mind.
When we, when we construct the model, one of the key inputs is going to be groundwater pumping, and the question will be, where do we get that data? And in the Big Chino, for example, groundwater pumpers don't have to report, but there are other ways to derive that. In the case of private well owners, for example, the wells are registered through DWR, and we'll be able to pull them up, know their locations, understand their intended use, and possibly, you know, cross-reference that against land use patterns, and where we know those wells are located. When we get a total amount of pumping, pumping that we put in the model, that's, that's how we'll kind of understand the relative pumping, amount of pumping that's going on from various users now. As far as how that's simulated in the future, you know, as was stated earlier, that would be part of the next phase of modeling after the model is calibrated and constructed, and the sensitivity analyses have been run, and we're, you know, we're confident that it's, that it's appropriate for that use. At that time, you know, you know, various types of pumping scenarios can be simulated from various users.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Blair?
I've got two or three questions. First, Leslie, I'd go to the contract. It's a three-year contract, and our share indeed is one-third of that, just for clarity.
Basically, it's a third, but it's actually aligned to the city's intergovernmental agreement with Prescott Valley, so we pay 54.1%. So if we take the whole modeling cost, a third of it goes to SRP. The remainder, we pay for 54.1%. Prescott Valley covers the other.
Thank you. And I think because I've sat on enough of these water committees over 16 years to answer Jean's question, from my perspective, is that USGS presented a beginning of a model, but even suggested in their own statements that those models would not be accurate, because there was not enough logged data, or years of data, to put down, to make it a valuable tool. So there's a lot of those tools out there that, and the gentleman that just spoke, I wonder if he's going to use some of that old data tool, talking about the old production wells that existed out in the Chino Valley Ranch area, where we have, there was a pile of documented irrigation wells, and used through the 60s, 70s, and 80s, and are you going to look at any of that historical data, and what it had to do with the flows at the time, or if that is available? Because I think that's a huge number to look at.
Yeah, there's, there's a pretty, there's a vast amount of information available historically, and that's all part of the process. We won't just be looking at what's going on now, but what's, but what's happened in the future, because to calibrate the model, we have to look at the entire history of, for example, pumping, water use, recharge, and everything. And the prior studies that have been done, we'll review those. Prior well locations, prior pumping, you know, that will all be taken into account. It's a pretty big effort to do that.
The reason why I bring this up is it's not only about USGS doing a one- or two-year study, and putting together a model, it's many years of activities that took place out there. And to refine it, to actually get to a point of saying, what does that really mean for the Verde, and the downhill water users? What it means to me is that we're doing our share here in the City of Prescott, and maybe the people in the Verde should go out and do some vegetation management that has been ignored for many, many years. So I get pretty, pretty passionate about people talking about water to the City of Prescott, knowing the kind of people that we have employed, our water resource people, John Mundelow, Mr. Cornrum, people working here to put these contracts together, to make it better for the population into the future, and certainly your company. But I don't take a very sleight of hand when I start thinking about people criticizing the information that was not fully developed yet. And that doesn't mean going to you, Jean, because there's been a lot of criticism from over in the Verde Valley, that we would not accept the study because we were afraid of what it showed. And right now, we're just getting to the meets of this whole thing, and hiring people at a big cost to put together a very valuable study, along with a lot of logged data. So I think people need to hear that.
Mayor Broden.
Thank you, Mayor. Eckling Blair, thank you, Mr. Cornrum, for being here. Appreciate SRP, and SRP working with the city. I appreciate Prescott Valley working with the city. This goes back a long, long way. Leslie, this is probably prior to your working with the city, when a lot of this took place, and the historically irrigated acres, and the water associated with the historically irrigated acres, and the Big Chino Ranch purchase, et cetera. While Prescott purchased 100% of the water, and decided to share 46% of the water, Prescott was the only assured water provider in the AMA that has right to import water. And that was mitigated, and went through all the courts and everything, down to about 8,100 acre feet, if I'm not mistaken. And the fact that there's millions of acre-feet of water in the aquifer, and the fact that there's X amount of exempt wells, that this community cannot be accountable for, always brings to mind when we get into these conversations, I don't understand fully why the citizens of Prescott, with the private property right, water right, that we worked with SRP, we worked with ADWR, we worked through the state legislature, and we came up with legislation specific to what the citizens of Prescott were assured we could get out of the Big Chino, as long as we followed the rules. And part of those rules was to do certain things, and that's what we're doing. I think it is an unreasonable, very similar to what Councilman Blair down here was saying, it's an unreasonable expectation to expect the citizens of Prescott to be accountable for half the states dipping into the Big Chino aquifer, for example, or any other place, for us to satisfy their overdraft of water, when we're doing what we were asked to do when, you know, the Haciapa Lake, and the various different things that we did to accommodate various entities down in Phoenix, and along with some money. I'm sort of miffed that we keep having to go through the same old stuff every time we discuss water. I mean, fact is, we have, I think it was the Superior Court, I could be wrong, that sanctioned our right to pump the water. We have that right, it's our water. And we're going to pump the water, when we can figure out how to get it here, when to get it here, and when it's advantageous for us, it is our water right. Now, we're doing all of these other things to accommodate different things, to assure many other players, that our 8,100 acre-feet of water isn't going to compromise the planet, because that's not what's coming. Okay? If there's a problem out there in the groundwater resources of the state of Arizona, ADWR, it may not be with the City of Prescott. It may be with the City of Phoenix. It may be with somebody else that's sucking down 1,300, 1,400 acre-feet of water. When, you know, it just, it's very aggravating. Every time we sit here and get into this conversation, when we're being legally compelled to do things that other folks in their water were not as equally legally compelled to do. So I'm just making those comments. I don't have a question, per se. I appreciate Mr. Cornrum being here, because he knows the history, he was here. He knows how hard all of this was worked through, the legislature, through ADWR, through SRP, and why we came up with the strategies that we're doing now, and why we're doing the monitorings that we're doing. But at no point in time is it anticipated, at least by one council member, that the citizens of Prescott should be held accountable for everybody else, whether downstream, upstream, or someplace else on the planet, because we choose to take our water right.
Mayor, I got one quick question.
Go ahead.
That won't be long. Recognizing that we're recharging right now, and I think it's, it's great that people understand that, that we're recharging, is that going to show up in that study, the recharging, and like what we have going on now, and everybody's spilling, we got great water happening, and we're recharging 8 million gallons a day, 8 million a day, and we're doing it two months early, thank you for the weather and SRP, and a contract. But, you know, when you start talking about 60 days of recharging early, times the amount that we're recharging, you know, it needs to be noted that that's 480 million gallons, recharging back into the aquifer through our sanitation sewer, and I would like to see what kind of effect that has with the modeling. It's got to have some effect. It's like filling a bathtub, once it's full, it's full.
Yes, sir. I think that we can translate that, and we can certainly translate up from the little chino up to the big chino, what you're speaking about regarding recharge. So within this comprehensive agreement, there's already an existing contract, it's led by SRP regarding stream flows, to help improve the recharge aspects, and that has to go into the model again. So this long list that you can basically not read up there, is a lot of the data inputs that have to go into a model to have it successfully work, and one of those is recharge, whether it be mountainfront, or in channel, or however. The modeling team will be looking at that.
Thank you. I think, I think it's great that everybody listening understands it's more than one piece, it's a lot of pieces.
Well, I'm sure when you wanted to have this pulled, you didn't realize in just introducing everybody, we've given such a long discussion, but, and I will tell the people that are out there, this is a very in-depth, very complex subject. There's a lot of history to it, there's a lot of moving parts. We're going to be having to do a lot in the future to try and transport that water everywhere, from determining if, you know, how much we can take, whether we can take it at all, and then even the transport out, and, you know, what that's going to cost us. So if people are really interested, and we just hit snippets today, so if you're really interested in knowing more about that, I very, very much encourage you to go to their website, and keep watching what's going on there, and we'll, we'll keep updating that with new information. So, is there any other questions, comments from the council?
Do you want to take any public comment?
I don't normally do that on this voting, on the consent agenda item, so I'm not going to do that.
There are some people here who are very interested.
Well, so you brought them?
No, they wanted to come.
Okay, I'll take one comment, because I normally don't allow this during the consent agenda, because we got a lot of ground to cover, so I'll take one comment.
I have a very important comment to make on the fact we have the voters who voted for Prop 401, and I hope you'll take it. Because you're going to need those voters when the pipeline comes to a vote.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for a moment. Most of my questions have already been answered, I will try not to repeat them. But I do have a couple issues I'd like to bring to the council's attention. It's already been talked about, this was a lot of money we're asking you for. And the original comprehensive agreements talked about running a nested model. That means basically reusing the USGS model, and just adding in all the new data that's up there in all those model sets. If that were to be done, I believe the costs would come down drastically. That's my first comment. I don't know if we want to take them one by one, or we just...
Well, you got about one minute, so just, just give me your comment real quick, and then the staff will look at them.
The staff will look at that. To Councilman Blair's question, as I read this, the model will not include the area of the Little Chino aquifer. So as your questions are, the recharge that we're talking about will not be included in the calibration of the model we see at this point. And I think this goes to my final comment, is that the scope of work for this is all being done behind closed doors, with no public input. Your public here in Prescott consists of people like me, with 30 years of modeling experience, we have former USGS geologists, we have geophysicists, that all live in this community, and enjoy it, that's why we're here, it's a wonderful place to live, but we want to make it better, and we'd like to be part of this process. Now, I understand the legal agreement, because it has lawyers around, closed itself, but as part of this scope of work is concerned, it's a technical scope, it doesn't go into the planning and to the legal aspects. And I would ask the council to make modifications, so that some of this concerned citizens in this community can be involved in this. If they don't, three years down the road, we're still going to be in the same discussions, with lawyers entering the room from various places, and we will not be on the same page. I think it's important that at the end of this study, we all come together, and start talking about mitigation if necessary, and how we move forward.
Okay. Thank you. One minute.
Leslie Hoy, I'm going to talk really fast. In the packet on pages, buried on...
Could you, Dan, arrange yourself, please?
Leslie Hoy.
Okay.
All right, we'll have to talk fast. Okay. In the packet on pages 118 and 119, for the council today, it's buried the portion about Prop 401. For the people who were not here in 2009, and have moved here since, I just want the public to know that when the pipeline, that the pipeline must come to a vote, and you will be allowed to vote. And it's very important, because we, this is going to be a very expensive project. It's our water for the future, and it's the fate of the Upper Verde River. So in the packet, I actually found the comments about Prop 401 disconcerting. I was here for the so-called independent review by the attorney from Gus Rosenfeld, who frankly was a joke. I did a lot of research on him, and it was a little scary. So don't put in the packet that there was an independent review by that guy. If we want a good, and by the way, he was a person who was hired because he had a track record of trying to overcome citizen initiatives in this valley. We are the City of Prescott, we, the voters, are the City of Prescott, you know, please take that into account. And at the point that we have a pipeline vote, the whole purpose of Prop 401 was to lay it out clearly, explain it clearly, explain to people why are we spending this money, how are we protecting the river, so that the citizens understand and can make an intelligent vote. Therefore, we must honor the citizens' propositions, both 401 and 400. And it would be helpful if, when we have these public presentations, we could have some comment from the voters. I prepared more than one minute. But I'm doing my best in one minute. Anyway, we, all of us need to be at the table to solve these problems, the public can't be at the table when we're shut out. So thank you for taking my comment today, and let's go forth with allowing the public to be involved more, just as Pete said. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the liquor license agenda.
I'm going to vote on that one.
Pardon?
You need to vote on that one.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, can I make a motion?
Come ahead.
Okay. I move that we accept to approve City Contract Number 2017-246.
Second.
Got a second. Got a motion, second vote, please.
Pass the six to zero.
Mayor, I ask you prior if I could speak to one of the consent items, even though it's been voted.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to point out to the public, Consent Item Number G, because I think it's truly... truly a milestone. And that is the approval of the Economic Development Contract with Jim Robb, the Robb Group. I believe this is an amazing step forward in our economic development model that our new city manager, Michael Lamar, brought forward. And I think that we're going to see some great results from Mr. Robb and partnerships that he's already forging with Emory Riddle and others. And I wanted to point to, earlier in our study session, we talked about our budget. And we had this wonderful pie chart. And one of the things we need to do in the city of Prescott is to grow our pie. We need to grow our revenue. But within this pie chart, our economic initiative budget is 1.2 percent. That is something I hope that as we go forward, once we're able to take care of the unfunded liability through our vote on August the 29th, that we will be able to show and do more to forge partnerships within our community, to bring jobs for our young people that continuously people say, let's make sure that we have jobs, good jobs available here for our citizens and young people that are graduating from Yavapai College, Prescott College, Emory Riddle, and keep them here. And I believe through the work of Mr. Robb's and the Robb Group, and the work of our citizens hopefully passing this initiative on August 29th, we're going to be able to see economic development be a lot more than 1.2 percent of our general fund. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now are we ready to move on? Okay. Liquor License Agenda. Item A.
Item 9A1, Public Hearing and Consideration of a New Liquor License Application for a Series 12 Restaurant License from Thomas L. Beal, Applicant Touchmark at the Ranch LLC Located at 3150 Touchmark Boulevard. Mayor and Council, this is a request for a new Series 12 Restaurant License for the Clubhouse Restaurant located on the property. The police department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance with state law. The Community Development Department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance with zoning requirements and building safety issues. And also, the application is in compliance with the building plans that were submitted to Community Development at the time the development agreement was adopted by council. And the business license will be submitted when they are ready to open. The application and license fees have been paid, and the applicant, the application has been posted at the proposed location for the required twenty days. No public comments have been received, and I believe Mr. Beal is in attendance.
Come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So, yeah, we're hoping to add this restaurant with a liquor license. It's an important part of our hospitality and dining services for residents and guests. And so this, the clubhouse is the first restaurant to open. We'll have three dining rooms and two commercial kitchens on the property. And so we're hoping that you'll entertain the liquor license application. And it's already been inspected by Herb Cruthers, the detective of the Arizona Department of Liquor Licensing. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
When do you plan to open your facility?
Yeah, we're hoping soft opening would happen sometime in June and an official opening in July.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the council?
Just one. Will the facility be open to the public, or is it primarily for the residents and their guests?
It's the, we have the three dining rooms. Two of them will be just residents and guests. The particular clubhouse will be open to public as well. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I had the opportunity to go up and thank you for that tour. I recommend everybody go up to Touchmark and take a tour. It's absolutely phenomenal, and it's going to be such a jewel for the city of Prescott. So thank you for coming to Prescott.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to close public hearing.
Do you have a motion and second vote, please?
Passes six to zero.
Do you have a second motion?
I move to approve liquor license application number 12133671 for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Touchmark at the Ranch located at 3150 Touchmark Boulevard.
Can I motion a second vote, please?
Passes six to zero.
Well, good luck on your facility. We're looking forward to it. Item B.
Item 9B, Mayor and Council, there are four special event liquor license applications on today's liquor license agenda. Three requests are for a Series 15 Special Event Liquor License, a request from the Boys and Girls Club of Central Arizona, one from the Yavapai Trails Association, and one from the Prescott Unified School District Education Foundation. And then there's one request for a Series 16 Fair Festival Special Event Liquor License from Superstition Meadery. The applications have been determined to be in compliance with city requirements and are being recommended for approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask.
Point of order, can we, Dana, could this be motioned, like special event permit, liquor permits for one through four? Can we do it that way?
Yes.
Okay.
Any discussion questions on this? Any from the public? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to approve special events liquor permit license, Items B1 through B4.
Got a motion and second vote, please?
Passes six to zero.
Regular agenda.
Item 10A, Award of City Contract Number 2017-249, Corallo Engineers for the 2017 Water and Wastewater Models Update in an Amount Not to Exceed $369,100, and Award of City Contract Number 2017-254 to NOSZ Incorporated for Software Upgrades and Training in an Amount Not to Exceed $16,336.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Gwen Roach. I'm the analyst for the Public Works Department. The item before you is for approval of a contract with Corallo Engineers to update the water and wastewater models. The city currently uses Innovize H2O map modeling for this purpose. It's a virtual representation of our actual delivery of water and collection of sewer within the city. In 2005, we started our first wastewater model, and in 2008, we started our first water model. In 2013, we updated both models in an effort to identify an infrastructure improvement plan for the new legislation that had been passed as it relates to impact fees. The city will be embarking on a new study related to rates and fees, I believe, in fall of 2017. To support that effort, we need to update the water and wastewater models. Those models identify infrastructure needs that would be needed as far as twenty years into the future. We've used the model for other purposes as well, things like the insurance fire rating for the city. We've used it to look at new projects, to see how they integrate into the system, and whether they'll work efficiently, or whether they could work in a more efficient way. We also, in the 2013 models, identified eight projects where we were able to save the city $1.2 million in projects that no longer needed to be done. So the models are critical to our everyday operation of the water and wastewater systems. It gives us that virtual ability to look at what-if scenarios on a day-to-day basis as the system is functioning without interrupting service to our citizens. Like any software, over time, the software provider changes the software itself. So one of the things on this agenda item is to upgrade. We'll be using the same software vendor, so the cost will be minimal, about $6,000 to upgrade to the newer software. That'll require some training of the staff, but in an effort to offset some of those costs, we partnered with Prescott Valley and a couple of local engineering firms, and they'll be paying about half of the training cost when we bring the trainer here. It's significantly less than sending staff to another state, as well as sharing the cost with our partners here in the community. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have related to the models update.
Questions, comments? Councilwoman Lozelle.
Thank you, Mayor. It's not a question, it's not a comment about this, it's a question. John, this roughly $390,000 is from the water fund, wastewater fund. It cannot be spent on PSPRS liability payoff, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? We're really digging that one deep every time. Any from the public? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to award City Contract Number 2017-249 and City Contract Number 2017 and 254.
Second. Yeah, motion and second vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Next item.
Item B, Approval of a Design-Build Contract for Production Well Rehabilitation Program, Chino Valley Well Field and Production Well Number Five Evaluation Project in an Estimated Amount of $478,720. City Contract Number 2017-024.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Steve Oros of Public Works. This item is for a design-build contract to develop a program for our production well rehabilitation of the six wells in the Chino Valley Well Field that produce the water for the city. The wells were originally drilled in the late 40s through early 60s. There's been a few updates and maintenance in the 80s, and as recently as about nine years ago. The systems have reached an age where they need to be basically really overhauled. And this program is to develop a process of approaching each of the well sites, and also to specifically evaluate what's needed to rehab the well number five specifically. As the program moves throughout the years, it's the intent to take the model that's developed for the well five and apply that to the other wells. That's why we went with a design-build concept for delivering the project. The contract before you today will result in a basic approach to evaluation of the wells and a evaluation of well five specifically, along with a guaranteed maximum price to complete the rehabilitation of that well five. That'll be part of a separate contract that'll come back to council later, probably next fiscal year. This evaluation and development of the program will take about eight months to complete, and it'll be funded through the water fund. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Councilwoman Blair.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, if I heard you right, or maybe understand it right, that this cost will be for well number five, but the model will be able to use, be able to be used on the other five at no additional cost?
There'll be some minor costs, because each of the well sites have different attributes, but they have a lot of similar. They have the same needs for wells, pumps, infrastructure, SCADA elements to control things, and the building that'll be housing all these facilities at each well. If we're developing a kind of a building block that can be added, subtracted, moved around a little bit for each of the wells, because they are similar, but they are different.
You would suspect that that cost might be marginal, opposed to what we're paying today.
Absolutely. That's the intent, is that'll be very minor cost changes, order on the order of magnitude of what the evaluation is, which is, I believe, around $100,000-ish.
Okay, thank you.
What's the cause of Phase Two? You have that yet?
We don't have that yet. The cost for the evaluation of well five is about $50,000 to develop that process, along with the engineering, which is part of the rest of the contract.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2017-024.
Second.
Okay, a motion and second vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Next item.
Item C, Approval of Wastewater Treatment Centralization Projects. One, Approval of City Contract Number 2017-240 to FAN Contracting for the construction of SunDog Truck Main Phase A project in an amount not to exceed $2,289,332.74. Item two, Request for Approval of Night Work for the SunDog Truck Main Phase A project. Three, Approval of City Contract Number 2017-250 to FAN Environmental for construction of the SunDog WWTP lift station in an amount not to exceed $20,020,76. Four, Approval of City Contract Number 2017-238 for design of the SunDog Truck Phase, Truck Main Phase B project with lion engineering in an amount not to exceed $220,486. And five, Approval of City Contract Number 2017-251 to Waterworks Engineers for design of the Highway 89 Lift Station in an amount not to exceed $593,216. And that number's different than what's put on the agenda. That was a mistake, that $1,997. It should be the $593,216.
Correct. Thank you. That typo was in the agenda item, in the text, the $593,000 was correct. Hello again. This is for a grouping of our centralization projects that we heard a briefing on earlier at the workshop. This is for two construction projects, one for the trunk main that goes from the current SunDog wastewater treatment facility with the line going up past the Watson Lake entrance to the Dells. And then the second construction item is for the actual lift station to move the material through the line to the airport reclamation facility. The second and third design elements are for the next phase, which is Phase B, for the trunk main from the VA roughly to the SunDog facility, and for the lift station associated with that trunk main. One of the other elements that are in these motions is for the ability to do night work on the Phase A construction of the trunk main, which involves the three-lane section north of Watson Lake Roundabout, and the ability to do the other work in the shoulder if it's needed, if it's more efficient to do the work at night. We're trying to minimize the impact to the public, as that is a major corridor for commuters and tourists. So if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. We did have two bids on the construction side for the trunk main. FAN Contracting was the low bid responsive, and the other word escaped me just now.
Responsible.
Thank you. We learned that earlier today. And also, the lift station, we had...
Not very good.
I'll work on that. The FAN Environmental, we did get one bid for the lift station. It is a very specialized process, so it was not surprising. We did have six contractors at the pre-bid for that, but only one actual bid. So with that, I'll be available for any questions on this grouping, and there's individual motions for each of these elements.
Councilwoman Blair.
Yes, Steve, I know you might not have the answer for it, but, you know, I've always been curious, especially like on this one, where in the first trunk main, there were seven contractors that had an interest that showed up, and only two submitted a bid. And then there were six that showed up for the lift station, and only one provided a bid. What would you suspect was the issue?
That's a difficult one. We have these pre-bids, so we understand who's potential bidding, to share information to make sure everybody's on the same page, understanding what the projects are. The contracting community is very hard to predict who's going to actually bid. So we do our best to inform, and we look at the bids as we get them.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Lozelle.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to hit this horse one more time, and it should be dead. This, I don't know, I lost track of how much this, we're spending here today.
About five and a half.
These millions of dollars that we're going to be approving here, most likely. Again, I said this earlier and at the study session, this is a costly venture, but in the end, at the end game, is a more efficient and cost savings to the fee payers of all of our water and sewer. But again, these, this money does not come out of, it cannot be used to pay off the PSPRS. I just got to keep hitting that over and over again, and I'm sorry if I'm boring everybody.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Dana, I just wanted to clarify the typo in the amount. That was in the fifth contract, 2017-251, and the actual amount is $593,216. Okay.
You know, the questions, comments on this item? Any from the... Any from the public? Okay, we got a series of motions here. Go ahead and with the first one.
Mayor, move to approve city contract number two zero one seven dash two four zero.
Second.
Okay, motion and second vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Mayor, move to approve night work for Sun Dog Trunk Main Phase A project.
Second.
Motion and second vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Mayor, move to approve city contract number two zero one seven dash two five zero.
Second.
Okay, motion and second vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Mayor, move to approve city contract number two zero one seven dash one three eight.
Second.
Okay, motion and second vote, please.
Mr. Blair.
Passes six to zero.
I think the number is wrong on that. I actually think it's two thirty-eight, because that's what it says in the body of the text and not in the approval.
Okay, I'll amend that and make it two zero one seven dash two three eight.
Second.
Typo.
Okay, yeah. Got a motion and second, vote please.
Passes six to zero.
Mayor, move to approve city contract number two zero one seven dash two five one.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, vote please.
Passes six to zero.
Item D.
Thank you.
Item D, approval of vehicle auction service contracts with Harris Auction, city contract number two zero one seven dash two five six, and Ritchie Brothers Auctioneers, city contract number two zero one seven dash two five seven, through NJPA, contract number zero four one three one six dash RBA for the disposition of city assets.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. May I ask Mike Carr with Fleet Services. This item requests approval for the Fleet Service Division to enter into a service contract with Harris Auction of Prescott and Ritchie Brothers Auctioneers of Phoenix for the disposition of vehicles and equipment identified in Attachment A. Fleet Service Division is responsible for the proper disposition of city fleet assets that have met their useful life. Vehicles and equipment that exceed three thousand dollars in value require council approval to dispose of per the city code. In the past, we've used a auction company out of Texas, and this has proved to be an inefficient way to dispose of city assets. We wind up using city resources and time to sell the vehicles. We wind up fielding a lot of phone calls regarding questions on the vehicles, taking people on tours of the assets, you know, taking them out to the vehicles, starting them for them, making sure that they run and everything. So it's a lot of use of city resources to get those disposed of. Additionally, we've been waiting one year to, we've been doing like annual auction in the past, and by doing that, we allow the vehicles to sit out in the yard, in the ready area, and what happens is they wind up having battery failures, tires go flat, rats get into them and infest them, eat the wires. And then in order to maximize our resale value, we have to spend additional money getting the units running again so that we can sell them at the auction. What this agenda item allows is the council to approve the city to enter into a contract with Harris Auction, a local auction service, and Ritchie Brothers Auctioneers. Fleet Services would like to change the process of performing auctions by sending all light duty vehicles to Harris Auction in Chino Valley, and they would have them at their yard once they're approved by council. Harris Auction will then be responsible for answering any questions, showing the assets to potential buyers, and then showing them to the, those buyers when they, when they're at their yard. All unique or specialty equipment will be sent to or auctioned online with Ritchie Brothers Auctioneers, who have a global bidding presence and will reach a broader market for our unique assets. The assets to be auctioned are listed in Attachment A. The list of assets has been reviewed and approved by the newly formed Fleet Asset Review Board. The assets meet the criteria established by the Fleet Service Division for replacement. The division conferred with the user departments and determined the retirement of each vehicle, and then some of the criteria include, but not limited to mileage, excessive maintenance costs, reliability, safety issues, and equipment utilization. Of the eighteen assets that are being surplus, none of them are being replaced by new assets. So each asset represents the removal of an asset from the city's fleet, lowering the total count to five hundred and fifty assets citywide. The Fleet Asset Review Board will be reviewing the remaining city assets to determine if there are others that can be surplus at the next Fleet Asset Review Board meeting. The auction is expected to begin on or about March fourteenth. Council approval will be sought on future auctions as Fleet Services acquires other assets throughout the year instead of one time per year. The term for the Harris Auction is for three years, and the contract may be administratively extended for up to two additional one-year periods by mutual agreement of the parties, and the Ritchie Brothers contract expires June twenty-second of 2020 through the NJPA. The proceeds of the auctions are returned to the vehicles, to the vehicle replacement fund or the division fund that originally incurred the cost of the purchase. Harris Auction will be paid seven-five, seven point five percent commission from the auction proceeds, and Ritchie Brothers Auctioneers will be paid four point five percent for online auctions and nine point five percent for live auctions. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Lizelle.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick question. Do we have, ready to go today without voting anything below this, this agenda item, ready to give to them?
I'm sorry, I, I don't understand the question.
Well, I mean, we're, we're getting ready to, some other items here to buy some more vehicles.
Correct.
Which in turn would be-
Additional.
Additional, but right now, do we currently hold assets that are ready to go to auction?
Eighteen. Eighteen assets that are there are ready to go to auction per Attachment A, and then the vehicles that we'll talk about shortly, we don't replace vehicles until we receive a replacement, so we don't auction them off until we receive it. So those are completely separate from the eighteen that are on the Attachment A.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Wilcox.
The vehicles that you call light duty, are those the kind of vehicles that the average consumer would be interested in, in this market area?
Yeah, pickup trucks, typically up to F-four-fifties, five-fifties, and under. So there's a variety of different types of vehicles and equipment. There will be other things that can go to Harris. The, the thing that we're looking at is having multiple avenues to maximize our resale value, which, you know, we have some garbage trucks that might be better off at a broader market, some fire apparatus, an older one that's been retired for three or four years now, and then a, just some various things that are, that are different, you know, an air burner from the solid waste division and a glass crusher. You know, it's not really gonna meet the auction market here, so we're trying to find a broader area for it.
Thank you.
I know, Lizelle, you have some vehicles that say does not fit department needs, but I think it's more than that, isn't it, that you evaluate these and that the cost of repairing them or keep them up exceeds the resale value?
Correct, yes.
So you want to go ahead and get rid of them?
Yes.
More than the fact that they just don't fit in, in a department anymore?
Right, and that's, you know, and that does come up. We're gonna be doing the utilization study to see if, yes, these vehicles are a necessity to that division department for use, so that does come up. In this particular batch, these were reviewed by the departments. The police department in particular put up eleven vehicles, so they were, they self-utilize, did a self-study on their utilization and put those vehicles forward for auction.
But then I think the Fleet Asset Review Board will look at whether or not it could be used in another department.
Absolutely, yeah. We reevaluate them for reassignment in other departments, and we did reevaluate one of their vehicles, vehicle nine-one-one. Nine-nine-one was repurposed to the Recreation Service Department, and then they gave up a vehicle which was in really bad repair, so we were able to get rid of a worse-off vehicle for, for a trade-in.
Okay. Councilman Ohr.
Thank you. So Mike, I see quite a few of these are RICO.
Mm-hmm.
And those are, explain, that's where, those are derived from investigations, or?
Um, Chief Black might be able to explain that a little bit better.
Mayor, Councilwoman Ohr, they were acquired through the PAMP Board as RICO assets. The funds through the auction process will be returned to the RICO account in the police department.
To the RICO account, okay, great, thank you. Yeah. See, that's-
Yeah, so they'll go back into their fund for RICO.
Got it, okay, good.
Any other questions, comments from the council?
I'd say good job on that.
I got a question. I just, Chief, if you can help me with this one. It's a training motorcycle. We're getting rid of one that has about forty-four thousand miles on it. It says a trainer motorcycle. Then we have another one, same series, it's got less than forty-eight hundred miles on it. Are we not gonna use motorcycles anymore, or does it not fit our criteria, or what?
Mayor, Councilman Blair, we will still continue to train on motorcycles. We're going to use our, our backup, our spare motorcycles for that purpose.
Okay. So this one's just hanging around, then?
We had a number that were there in case, or in the event that we were going to do a training program, we can use the other fleet assets for that purpose.
Thank you.
To add to that, the vehicle has low mileage, but being a training asset, it's, takes a lot of more use and abuse on that particular vehicle. With low miles, it's taken a lot more damage to it and wear and tear on the motor and clutch and transmission.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Okay, again, we have a number of motions here.
May I move to approve city contract number two zero one seven dash two five six authorizing Harris Auction to dispose of city surplus personnel, personal property?
Second. Got a motion and second vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Mayor, move to approve city contract number two zero one seven dash two five seven authorizing Ritchie Brothers Auctioneers to dispose of city surplus, personal property.
Second. Got a motion and second vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Number three, mayor, move to approve disposition of the eighteen pieces of personal property listed in Attachment A, which the council has determined to be idle, excessive, obsolete, and/or otherwise expendable.
Second. Got a motion and second vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Next item.
Item E, approval of city contract number two zero one seven dash two three zero for the purchase of six replacement vehicles for the Public Works Department. One each, two thousand seventeen Ford F-three-fifty regular cab four-by-four truck. Two each, two thousand seventeen Ford F-one-fifty regular cab four-by-four trucks. And three each, two thousand one seven, two thousand seventeen Ford F-one-fifty regular cab four-by-two truck, including aftermarket uplifting from Peoria Ford using State of Arizona contract number ASD PO one four dash zero six three two three seven pricing in a total amount of one hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Fleet Service Division, working in conjunction with Public Works, is requesting permission to purchase six replacement vehicles, including the cost as aftermarket upfitting of each vehicle. The vehicle replacements were reviewed and approved by the Fleet Asset Review Board for FY seventeen. The vehicle replacements consideration included the cost of repairs far exceeding the vehicle's value, and that the vehicle is vital to daily operations of the Public Works Department. The Fleet Service Division replaces aging light duty vehicles used in operation which are at or approaching ten years and a hundred and fifty thousand miles, have reached the end of their useful lives, and are becoming mechanically unreliable. The Public Works Department utilizes pickups for hauling materials, maintaining traffic signals, and transporting equipment trailers. The replacement for vehicles number eight thirty-eight, nine seven eight, nine eighty, eleven oh one, and eleven ninety-three will be outfitted with toolboxes, bed mats, and LED worklights, and the replacement for vehicle eleven thirty-five will be outfitted with a flip-top service body, toolboxes, and worklights. Vehicles, quite a few of these vehicles are well over the required replacement criteria that we look at as far as age and mileage. There are quite, there are a few of these are concerned for safety as well. We have three of them that are Dodge Ram fifteen-hundreds, one's a nineteen ninety-six, and two that are two thousand and ones, which are twenty-one and sixteen years old. It's hard to find parts for these vehicles. They suffer suspension issues, steering issues, and they can be unsafe to drive at certain speeds exceeding forty-five miles per hour, so we are definitely needing to get rid of those vehicles. Additionally, there are a couple of vehicles on here that we are looking at repurposing within other departments and divisions within the city, so mechanically sound, whereas they're, but they are over the replacement age. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Lizelle.
Thank you, Mayor. Who's on the review board? I mean, what's, is there two, three, five?
There's five people.
We've actually had just one meeting.
Correct.
The inaugural meeting, and it was myself, Amy Bonney from the police department, Mike-
Willie Black, Lars Johnson.
And Dennis Light participated as well.
Chief Light, okay. And I'm, I'm not arguing that the ones you're suggesting, they're, they meet their, their age. I guess what I'm saying is, I see a lot of vehicles with City of Prescott on them, and half of those are normally sitting in a parking lot. Okay, I'm not, I don't follow them all day, so I don't know. It just, and, and these here, I know they're purposed to go put cones out there, actually out there being, being the worker B and not the, not the, not the other Bs. But I guess, do we have a checkout thing? I mean, and, and I'm gonna use Henry, because I'm down there sometimes, and I see twenty trucks behind his office there. And, and I don't, again, I don't follow them all day. Do you need all twenty? I guess that's my question. Do we need as many vehicles as we have? And I'm not putting out the, the police and fire, because that's obviously, or the garbage trucks, but just that administrative day-to-day, whether it's Public Works or, you know, is there a motor pool that they can just check them out? Does it have to say Public Works on it, or can it just say City of Prescott?
Right, and that's something that the Fleet Asset Review Board will be looking at, is the utilization of equipment, and then also developing a carpool for city vehicles to be used by other departments. Currently, we're in the process of getting a fleet management policy in place that would outline those parameters. But as far as these vehicles, most of them are inspection vehicles, and you do see some low mileage on there. I think that, and I'll just, in the, in the recent years of some of them being unsafe have been parked, and then the replacement has been pushed back and pushed back and pushed back, and that's why you see low mileage, because they don't want to drive them, because they're not safe. So we're trying to get rid of these low mileage ones, which throw up a red flag, but that's because of the unsafe aspect of using these vehicles, so that the inspectors don't want to take them out and, and drive them.
Thank you.
Mayor brought down.
Thanks. Following up on Greg's comments, sir, what I'd like to know is, why, why are twenty vehicles parked behind Henry's office, and what he's seeing doing in his office that would necessitate the need for twenty vehicles to be back there?
I don't know, Henry?
Cut me by surprise, Mayor and Council. I don't believe there are twenty vehicles sitting in our parking lot, for one thing. And you may have come by the time that when they are actually in the office. More often than not, and if you come, you see probably two trucks sitting there. Inspectors need to be on the job all the time. They go to different parts of the city, so they cannot necessarily share. Project managers, the same, utility people. So two is more like it, and the total at night, they're not twenty. They're, I don't know, ten? Eight?
You might have had a joint meeting there or something with other departments.
Yeah, yeah, he might have had a joint meeting. It sounds like it.
No, but I, I-
Or somebody did.
Henry, I guess I'm not, I'm not questioning, I mean, questioning it, but I just want to make sure that we're utilizing the vehicles to the maximum.
Councilman Lizelle, you, you make a good point, and we've had a dialogue. I think there's some siloing about vehicles, and it's not just vehicles. You know, we had a conversation the other day about trailers. How many trailers do we have?
You want me to say this publicly?
Yeah, I want you to publicly tell them, because it-
There are eighty-two trailers citywide.
How many?
Eighty-two.
Yeah.
Everybody needs a trailer.
Yeah.
The hydro joke.
And I think that that's been some of the mentality in some instances. There needs to be the ability to have a motor pool or an equipment pool to share their resources and unload what we don't need, because this organization doesn't need eighty-two trailers. So that's your point.
That's my point.
And we need to get-
And I'm not necessarily questioning the need for this and this, but do we need it all?
Yeah, and that's what we're-
I'm sorry.
Sorry, if I may, Mayor, I absolutely agree, and the reason that you see some of the vehicles that Mr. Carr is referring to, they have beyond, you know, the expectation and high mileage, because I frankly stopped the replacement two years ago, a year ago, let's push it a little further, a little further, but to a point that, you know, Mike's is just too expensive to maintain him and not necessarily safe. We do that. As far as sharing, we do know, I think we have provided a good example, the Public Works. We help entire city with the projects. We help entire city with real estate and other things. The same, our solid waste, they were in need of emergency generator, we're gonna go buy one. We are now, not, we have always been one city, we are now part of the same department, so they are borrowing a generator from our wastewater. No reason to buy one when we have one sitting in there. We are doing this all the time. We agree.
Great, thank you.
I appreciate your comments, Henry, I really do. I just wanted to make sure, if you're having a party down at your office, that we- you're having a party down at your office, that we get invited too, you know, that's all.
That was a cookout, that wasn't a party.
Chili cookout.
I think Henry was holding a cookout, so. I guess the one question I have is, as we buy these new vehicles, the ones that are being replaced will go to auction?
They will be reevaluated regardless. It's one for one. One purchase, one goes out. So they could be reassigned. I know one of them, we, we talked about reassigned to Animal Control, putting a box for Animal Control on one of the F-150 pickups. So we can definitely do that, but it's gonna be one for one. One purchase, one goes out the door. So we're not growing our fleet, we're not adding any vehicles. These are replacements. And I'd like to just mention that this gets us caught up for, what I've been bringing to you guys, to you all for the last six to eight months, has been getting us caught up for FY15, 16, and 17. And going forward in FY18, we don't have very many vehicles and assets to replace, just dire needs, necessity stuff. So this is catching us up on replacements that we've been putting off for, for many years.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do I have a motion?
Mayor moved to approve city contract number 2017-230.
Second. Got a motion and a second vote, please?
Pass us six to zero.
Next item?
Item F, approval of purchase of three each marked patrol vehicles from Peoria Ford using State of Arizona law enforcement contract ADSPO13-038802 pricing in the amount of $177,438.8. City contract number 2017-231.
Thank you again, mayor and council. Fleet Service Division, working in conjunction with the Police Department, is requesting authorization to purchase a total of three new patrol vehicles to replace three patrol vehicles that have met the city's criteria. The vehicles being purchased include three 2016 Ford Police Interceptors from Peoria Ford in Arizona. The three vehicle replacements were reviewed by the Fleet Asset Review Board and approved for FY17 replacement. The Fleet Asset Review Board considers the age, mileage, and work order history of the three vehicles. I'm sorry. When replacing aging vehicles using patrol operations, we look at the criteria of six years and 150,000 miles. We evaluate whether they've reached their useful life or becoming mechanically unreliable for emergency operations. The Police Department utilizes patrol vehicles for daily law enforcement. These vehicles require regular maintenance to ensure reliability and maximum useful lives. As vehicles age, key components suffer failures requiring repair or replacement. Repair and replacements escalate each year that a vehicle is in service. Most of these on here are well over the requirement of six years and 150,000 miles. I did want to point out to, to one of them here that has lower mileage. The vehicle number 1330 is a nine-year-old Crown Victoria, has 106,000 miles on it, but it has been to our facility 16 times in the last six months for electrical issues. One of the biggest problems, the components that were put into a nine-year-old police vehicle are not being made anymore. And there's nothing that's comparable or replace, you can't replace them with anything off the shelf, so we wind up having to custom-build systems to get this vehicle back on the road, which, then you come up with other problems, so it just starts to snowball into more problems with the vehicle. So that is one that is low on the mileage list, but meets the criteria of being a mechanically unsound vehicle. Other than that, 1350 is a six-year-old Chevy Tahoe with 132,000 miles on it. It is a frontline patrol SUV, and the mileage of the asset will be over $150,000 before the replacement vehicle is available. All three of these assets will be considered by the Fleet Asset Review Board for disposition at the next meeting. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
When we get these vehicles, what equipment do they have on them? Do they have the radios and?
Yes, so we, we basically, it'll be completely outfitted. So we'll have a spec meeting with the, the winning company. So we'll go through all the specifications, the computers, the radars, the cameras, the radios that are in them, and then what type of cage goes in there, any specialty items like that, the lighting. So we, we've basically done all the spec work for it, but we do a final meeting prior to the vehicle being ordered to make sure it meets all the specifications.
So the cost we have here includes all that equipment?
Correct, all outfitted.
Anyone else?
I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
On this one quote, I guess you don't quite understand, it says for graphics, a quantity of 54 at $60 apiece for over $3,000, graphics for 54 vehicles?
I'm sorry, I did not bring the spec sheet.
Okay, I just, it just didn't make sense to me, so.
I can look in that.
We're not changing our graphics, are we?
No.
Okay.
I'll have to look into that and get back with you, councilman.
I mean, that may not have belonged in the packet, it may have been a mistake or something, but it just seemed.
I believe it is, yeah.
Kind of odd that there'd be 54 quantity of anything.
Yeah, it's, it's not correct.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, let's see, where am I? G, right?
Yeah.
G, okay. Mayor recommend to approve city contract.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, no, it's out. Move to approve city contract number 2017-231.
Second. Got a motion and a second vote, please?
Pass us six to zero.
Next item, please?
Item G, approval of emergency purchase of one each 2017 Peterbilt Refuge chassis from Rush Truck Center, and one each Scorpion side load body from Arizona Refuge Sales using City of Tempe contract number T15-097-01 pricing in a total amount of $277,144.8. City contract number 2017-220.
Mayor and council, I haven't left yet, I'm still here. Fleet Service Division, working in conjunction with the Solid Waste Division, is requesting authorization to make an emergency purchase of a new automated side loader collection vehicle to replace vehicle number 1151. The new ASL will consist of a 2017 Peterbilt Refuge chassis and a Scorpion side load body. The vehicle replacement was reviewed and approved by the Fleet Asset Review Board. Replacement considerations include the cost of repairs far exceeding the vehicle's value, and that the vehicle is vital to the daily operations of the Solid Waste Division. The Solid Waste Division replaces aging vehicles used in its operation which are, or at or are approaching seven years, 10,000 hours, have reached the end of their useful lives, and are becoming mechanically unreliable. Vehicle 1151 is 10 years old, has over 18,000 hours and 125,000 miles on the chassis. The life of the vehicle has been extended 80% more than the recommendation for replacement hours. Due to the age and high hours of 1151, it is in need of extensive repairs, including a motor rebuild, transmission rebuild, and all-new hydraulic hoses. The total repairs to vehicle 1151 will exceed $50,000, far surpassing the vehicle's resale value. The Fleet Service Division, in conjunction with the Solid Waste Division, has evaluated the vehicle and determined that making the repairs would not be fiscally responsible. The vehicle has been removed from service and parked at Fleet Services. The asset was originally scheduled for replacement in FY18, however, due to extensive repairs required, replacement is being requested six months earlier than anticipated. Ordering the replacement vehicle now will ensure delivery early in FY18. Anticipated delivery of the vehicle is between July, I would say July and August of 2017. The funding will come from the FY18 budget and will not impact the FY17 budget. Vehicle 1151 will be sold at the city's first next scheduled auction pending the FAB review and the council approval. Funding of the $277,144 will be available within the Solid Waste Division FY18 budget. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, go ahead, Jim.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2017-220.
Second.
Got a motion and a second vote, please?
Pass us six to zero.
Thank you.
Last item?
Adoption of ordinance number 5025-1563, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title IV, Chapter 4-6, Sections 4-6-1 definitions, and 4-6-2, license required exemptions of the Prescott City Code.
Mayor and council, I'm Lars Johnson, tax and budget manager. First, before we get into our item, I've been asked to give a little update where we stand with our business license implementation. This would be a suitable time for council and public to hear where we're at. As of today, we received 2,170 applications, and that's for all the different categories of business license. In that is 638 long-term residential rental applications, and that's something we're considering today. We'll get into that later. But that represents about 20% of what we know based on our tax licenses, who've actually come forward and applied and paid for the business license for residential rental. We've also received 26 vacation rental applications. Now, the vacation rental registration itself, because the way the ordinance is structured, doesn't necessarily mean that we have that many vacation rentals out there. One possibility is that the property is in a commercial zone. If that's true, based on the definition of vacation rental in that code, they're not required to go through the registration and follow all of the other operational requirements in the code. What is required, though, is that they get a general business license. Also, council amended that code when we adopted it, so if it's an owner-occupied vacation rental, they're not required to go, to go through the, the regulations, as, as well as pay the increased fees for that city code. Also included is 13 structured sober living home applications. So the ordinance council adopted, gave 60 days for existing structured sober living homes to apply if they are required to. That 60 days is March, or sorry, yes, March 1st, which is tomorrow. We've talked to quite a few operators of structured sober living homes, and we've, let me just take a step back for a moment, say that, up to this point, our division's just been, you know, taking applications, answering questions. We haven't been out enforcing the ordinances yet. Over the next few months, that's it. We're gonna start moving into enforcement, notifying people that they haven't applied and find out why. So, so that's where we're at now. So structured sober living homes, there's a few different things. Obviously, one is they're not complying, or else they've closed. We've talked about, there may be 100 or so of these around Prescott. So one that haven't applied, or they've closed. We've also heard from a few operators, city staff, just in conversation, they haven't formally notified us, but some may be going to a four or fewer model. So instead of having five or more unrelated parties, that, you know, they're, they're trying to go to a different model, just having four or fewer. In that case, they don't qualify as a community residence, and will not need to apply for this. The third area is that if they are state-licensed facilities, so we've been notified, some of these places have gone, either they've had before, or now they are applying for, or have recently applied for, a license as a residential, actually, let's see, it's a behavioral health residential facility from the Arizona State Department of Health Services. Per the code, if, if they are licensed by the state, they're subject to those regulations. They do not need to apply for this license. So like I said, we've, out of the 100, we've heard from about 50. We have the 13 applications. We have 12, been notified of 12 that have closed. And 14 have been licensed or have recently licensed with the state. In addition to that, there's those that have just informally told us that they're going to a different model. Now, we have to go and obviously verify all of this. And that's what we're gonna be, you know, embarking on the next few months with other city staff, planning and zoning code enforcement, is, is how, how to go about enforcing the, the known, at least the people on the known list that we have, and find out what's going on. Is there any questions on the implementation before we get into the agenda?
Yeah, I've got a couple. I was talking to one provider, I think his name was, or the company's name was Royal Alliance or something, and they bought out Chapter 5 Solutions and Bridges. So I don't know how many homes each, each of those facilities had, but numerous, I know that.
Yes.
So how do you handle somebody like that, that, you know, has quite a few homes, but it's, it's one single business?
The, the ordinance, if they qualify, you know, if they fall in the definition of structured sober living home, they're not licensed by the state, they would require a license for each one of their locations.
Okay. We'll see whether that happens.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions, comments from council on this subject? Okay, continue.
So now getting to the agenda item, and what we're talking about today is, is the possibility for your consideration of eliminating, eliminating the requirement for long-term residential rentals to obtain a business license. Long-term is defined as 30 days or more, and these are homes, you know, that people have established a home in. And, and so that's one, is the long-term residential rental exemption. The second thing the ordinance would do is, is for those businesses that are complying to the vacation rental city code, or the structured sober living city code, they wouldn't be required to get a business license per se. But basically, what that does is it modifies the fee schedule. That's the way I look at it, is for vacation rentals, you know, we're charging them a $100 annual vacation rental registration. Up to this point, we've had to have a additional $35 because they're a business, they're applying for a business license. So, as well as the $450 health, safety inspection. What, so what this would do is drop the, that $35 off of the fee schedule for both vacation rental and the structured sober living home. So what we're proposing, what the proposal would do is, it would still keep short-term rentals licensed. So if they are a vacation rental, and they fall into the category of needing to get a vacation rental registration, but they get that, that registration. If they don't, but they still do 29 days or less, they would need to get a general business license. So we're keeping that, as well as the, those sober living homes that are licensed by the state, for example, they would still need to get a business license, just not the structured sober living home license. We also keep the commercial rental landlord license, which is a license per location for them. So that, those remain unchanged. And so, you know, the, why this is coming about and so early in, in implementation is, is we're about 20% down the road of, of getting long-term residential rentals licensed, and we'd like you to consider this early on to say, is this really something council wants to move forward with from a policy standpoint? Is this sort of the intent of the business license from, you know, the purpose being, of a business license being economic information, public safety, and compliance purposes? We've, staff has received, my division, spend a lot of our time answering questions from vacation rentals. Right now, what the city code requires is a license per location. So if a landlord has, there's also an exemption in there for three or fewer units in the city, you get one license, you can list your locations. If it's four or more, then you need one license per location. That's confusing to communicate, as well as for people to understand, as well as some people feel it's unfair. I think councils receive a lot of these complaints through their office. So my, we're trying to respond to these from the community, and so that is our proposal, is, is we, is that we would eliminate this requirement. And, and what we would do if this is passed, is we would go back and refund those that have already paid, back to January 1st. With that, I would take any questions?
Now, what do the other cities around us do? Are they requiring rental property to get a business license?
Prescott Valley. Prescott Valley specifically has that as an exemption, so they do not require that. They do have, commercial rentals are required to get a license. Chino Valley has a license, and my understanding is they, they do not require that. I'm not as familiar with their code as Prescott Valley.
So, we were kind of the exception?
We, we went forward with it, and part of the reason was this was adopted before the vacation rental and the structured sober living ordinances.
Well, we knew too, that when we developed this idea and proposed it to the council and went forward, where that, we knew there was gonna be some hiccups, there'd be some chances of having to make some changes as we saw how it was really affecting the community. So, you know, I expected something like this, and, you know, I think it's something that we need to move forward and make a correction to the ordinance. I guess the only thing that I'm a little concerned about is, when I was at the Pentagon, I came back here and bought a home, and I rented it out through a, a management company, and they would just send me the, the rent every month, and then when I got ready to sell the thing, I found out, or actually, when I came back to actually live in the home, I found out that I had to pay TPT. And so, I didn't know about that, and I expected my management company to let me know something like that. So, I guess one of the things I'm concerned about is, you know, there might be people out there like me that don't understand that there, there might be a requirement to pay TPT, so do we see any way to make sure that, you know, people understand that requirement?
As far as property management companies go, they're, they're really good on reporting on behalf of their clients, and many, those who enlist the services of a property management company may not realize that it's being paid on their behalf. That's up to the contract between the property owner and the property management company, but that represents at least a third of our properties are, are managed by property managers. And as far as the other, for the, the others that are not, you know, represented by a property management company, the, it is a little hard to get the word out there, but we do quite a good, we have a pretty good program of reviewing our utility billing system for those that have a landlord-tenant relation, and we contact them if they're not licensed, as well as, you know, the county has a database of all of the, for tax, property tax purposes, you have to, you're required to register, or change the class of your property because it affects your property tax, so you notify the county that it's a, that this has been used as a rental property, so there are sources for us to get that information.
Okay. Councilman Lozelle?
Thank you, Mayor. Lars, thanks for the presentation. It, it's confusing, and you, you do it for a living. For full disclosure, I have not got my business license yet, because I haven't decided whether I'm gonna continue doing business in the city of Prescott, quite frankly. But, we, now we're making an exception, because it's unfair, it's confusing, supposed to be cost-neutral, no inspection for this, but an inspection for that, but if they have this living, if, but if they're a rental, why is this industry treated any different than Jim Store, My Place, or, or Steve Shishko, or Steve Blair, or any number of people out there that have businesses? I just, we can say public safety, but, you know, public safety inspect, you're already doing that. You're, there was already a $35 fee for fire inspection, which would be public safety. And then you would say, well, that would guarantee that we have an accurate list, but we only have 2,000. I know there's well over 10,000 people in town, we don't have a compiled list. We have 2,000 people that are scared to death and just wanna do it because they have to, not because they want to. I say just trash the whole thing. I'm voting no on this, because the whole damn thing is screwed up.
Mayor Brodsky?
Thank you. I'm, Lars, I'm sorry, man. You do this because it's your job, and I understand that, okay? But, similar to Lozelle down here, I didn't support a business license to begin with, okay? I collect, I'm, I'm what you call long-term, okay? I'm here every day, I collect sales taxes on, you know, benefit of the city all day long, you know, every day, six, seven days a week, whatever the case is. I'm not a short-term rental, you know, I'm one of the long-term guys. Here again, I saw this coming, you know, now we can't, we don't have the resources to enforce this on everybody equally, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna pick and choose. We're gonna pick and choose who we're gonna do this, do this, do this, do this, too. And the fact of the matter is, it's the wrong thing to do. If you're not gonna do it equally, then don't do it at all. That's where I was to begin with, and that's where I'm at today.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do we need to have, have you read the, the changes to the ordinance, or?
Well, the, in your...
It's basically just what's here.
In your packet, the, the all-caps terms are the new terms, and then there's a strike through in 10D, and those are the substantive changes to your, to the, or proposed changes to the code.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 5025-1563.
Second.
A motion and a second vote, please.
Motion fails three to three.
I'm a no vote, because I boycotted it the first time, I don't believe in it.
John, could you clarify, what we were voting on was an amendment to the original ordinance, so the original ordinance stands in effect.
Oh, yeah. Original, in fact, the original ordinance stays in effect to now, to continue to include residential rental properties.
So, we've fixed nothing.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I address just one quick thing on this, on business license, since it doesn't really have to do with this ordinance, but I guess I would like for us, again, Mark, I'm sorry, to, to, to think about doing the directory as we had talked about when we originally came out with the business license.
Excuse me, yes, Councilman, we can definitely look at that as we move forward, and of course, based on the action by council, we will continue to enforce this on residential rentals as well.
Okay, in closing, I'll read my founding father's quote, this is from Thomas Jefferson, "I predict future happiness for Americans if they can prevent the government from wasting the labors of the people under the pretense of taking care of them." Have a great night, thank you for coming.